Good morning, everyone. It's 8:30. We'll call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order for Tuesday, September 2nd. Our first item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Right.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. Next, we have employee recognitions. Darren, 25 years of dedicated service to Clay County. Thank you very much. And Kerry, you would like to say a few things?
Congrats, Darren. So Darren is an exceptional employee. He really represents everything that you want to see in an employee. His reliability, his work ethic is really second to none. He has a unique ability to keep things lighthearted at the jail with his quick wittedness, but it's something that you need around in that environment. Best thing I can say about Darren is just, he is a guy that you just want to be around all the time. So, thanks Darren.
Congratulations. Next, we have Kathy McKay, 25 years. Congratulations, Kathy. Steve, did you want to...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I just want to thank Kathy for her 25 years of dedicated service and leadership in public health. She's led the county through some pretty challenging times, including H-1N-1, several flood events, and of course, the nasty C-word. We want to thank her for all the work that she's done in her remarkable career, so congratulations, Kathy.
And we have Sadie Albright, 15 years with social services. And I understand Sadie is not going to be here, but Sandy, you're gonna...
I am.
...accept and say something on behalf of her?
Yes. So Sadie's one of my hybrid workers, and today she's working from home and didn't want to make the trek in. But Sadie first started in Childsport in Becker County, probably about 20 years ago, then moved to Clay County as a financial worker, and then moved into my unit as a Childsport officer. She has one of the most challenging types of caseloads in our unit. It's one where there's no real way to collect until you build rapport with somebody and make them want to pay their support. So she does an awesome job with that, and we are very grateful to have her with the county.
You tell her thank you and congratulations on behalf of all of us.
I'll do that.
All right. Thank you, Sandy. All right. We'll move on with our agenda. Next, we have the citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments on items not on the agenda this morning? Seeing none in the audience? Any online?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We will then move on to approval of bills and vouchers.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills and vouchers.
Second the motion.
The motion by Commissioner Baer, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. Approval of minutes from August 19th.
Move to approve the minutes, 19th?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Krabenhoff, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. Our 8:35 item is a request approval to hire a motor grader operator. Good morning, Justin.
Good morning. So yeah, the item that I have today is requesting approval to hire a motor grader operator, and then per union policy, this position would have to be posted internally for five days before we post it to the general public.
Any further questions? Yes?
You will be wanting backfill on this?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we motion to approve the hiring of a motor grader operator.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Krabenhoff. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. All right.
Thank you.
Justin, we'll see you later for highway trekking. All right. Next, we have the request approval for the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, HRA, of Clay County to levy and collect a special benefit tax. Good morning, Dara. You can introduce your guests with you.
Good morning, Chair Campbell, Commissioners. My name is Dara Lee. I'm the Executive Director of the Clay County Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and with me is Don Bacon, Deputy Director of the Authority, and Vice Chairperson Anthony Dillard of the HRA Commission. Chair Brasseth for the HRA Commission may be joining us and is stuck in I-94 traffic, so we will hope.
Can't believe that.
I know. It's shocking. We are here today requesting consent to a special benefit tax of an HRA levy for the 2026 year. The Clay County HRA has a statutory authority to levy to support housing activities. However, this levy does require consent of the Clay County Commission. And each year prior to the HRA Board of Commissioners levying at all, they try to carefully balance the needs and the cost to the taxpayers against the additional investments that this levy can create in the community and the housing programs that it can support. So this year, the levy amount of $300,000 is approximately 17% of the maximum HRA levy of almost $1.8 million. This results in a cost of $3.11 for $100,000 in taxable market value. So most citizens of Clay County, most households, will be paying less than $10 per year in order to help leverage housing resources and deliver those needed items to the community. One of the items that it supports that you probably haven't heard about much is that we sponsor the Minnesota Cities Participation Program for Clay County. This is a Minnesota housing program that allows Clay County residents to access first-time homeowner loans, down payment assistance, and lower-income loans to fix up their properties. Prior to us taking this over, it was only available in specific cities within the county of Morehead, Holly, Barnesville, Dilworth, and Glendon, and they had to reapply every year. Since we've taken that over, it's available to all citizens in Clay County. This year, we're on pace to do $8 million in first-time loans and other assistance through Minnesota Housing through this program. So many of our folks who are paying this levy have also benefited from being able to utilize this program. It is administered by our local banks. And so anybody who's out there interested should talk to their realtors and the local banks about how to access this resource. There's also information available on the Minnesota Housing website.
Can you give the name of that one more time, so...
It's called the Minnesota Cities Participation Program, and it's through Minnesota Housing. And it helps moderate and low-income homeowners access reduced-interest-rate funding for their homes, both to purchase, down payment assistance, and to fix them up.
Thank you.
But this is one of the things that there's no administrative dollars that come with. The program is extremely quick and easy for us to administer, but there's no money to do it unless we utilize funds such as levy funds to do that. We also make additional investments using these levy funds for our local homeowners. We use primarily the rehabilitation loan program through Minnesota Housing for any extremely low-income homeowner in the county to make up to $27,000 through state funding, plus potentially matching levy funds to make basic improvements to their homes. Typically, there's our roofs, siding, windows, heating systems. Sometimes, we have a collapsed sewer that comes along, and we use direct levy funds to help support this, as well as using those levy funds to leverage programs such as the Minnesota Deed Small Cities Development Program. We're currently working with the city of Dilworth, who received $1.2 million to rehabilitate 23 homeowner-owners, plus I think we've worked with six businesses so far, and are encouraging additional businesses in the Highway 10 strip to also make improvements to their property. We are eagerly awaiting information on the grant application for the city of Barnesville. We submitted for an additional $1.2 million, and that, too, would benefit about 23 homeowners and up to 16 businesses in that community. Clay County, we used leveraged funds, plus the state-affordable housing aid that was awarded to Clay County in order to use as leverage for that application. In addition, we use levy funds directly to try to end child homelessness in our community. That is one of the primary uses of these funds, and we do that in cooperation with a lot of partners. In 2014, Clay County levy funds were used to create this program as one of... And our Chair, Commissioner Brasseth, joins us. We use those funds to create a pilot program in Clay County in partnership with CAP-LP, Churches United for the Homeless, Clay County Social Services, and the Morehead School Districts. We were one of three pilots awarded funding. Our pilot was extremely successful. Ours served as the basis for the development of a brand-new state-of-Minnesota program that went into effect in 2018 called Homework Starts With Home. We are the only entity to be continuously funded under that program, and we are able to serve households referred by local school districts who have children who are facing homelessness in their classes. This has been a very effective partnership. We now have partnerships with all the schools within Clay County, as well as a myriad of other partners. In fact, CAP-LP and us were on a call last week where they increased the investment in Clay County to over $1 million per year when one of the applicants who'd received funding declined the award. So we're down to once again three recipients across the entire state of Minnesota, and Clay County, HRA, and CAP-LP are one of those three. This is just one of the programs that we have targeted in ending child homelessness, and levy funds are used to support all of those. We also... This is just one of our examples of collaboration. We have worked with a variety of partners in trying to maximize housing supports and resources throughout our community. One of those examples was, as we all know, a year ago, Churches United was in somewhat of a dire situation, and we were grateful to see the entire community to come to play a part in making sure that that resource continued. One of the ways that the HRA contributed is they have two permanent supportive housing developments, Bright Sky Apartments and Silver Linings that just opened, and the HRA took over the administration of a program called Housing Supports in conjunction with Clay County Social Services. The HRA is now providing case management or supportive services to approximately half the residents of those buildings. The HRA also provides at least 75, up to 90% of the rental assistance for people to pay their rents in those units. So those are 43 households at Bright Sky and about 42, I believe, at Silver Linings. We have a long history of partnering with, and oftentimes sharing money, with Clay County Social Services, CAP-LP, Presentation Partners in Housing, CCRI, Lakeland Mental Health Central, Metro Behavioral Health Center, the Lotus Center, the FM Coalition to End Homelessness, the West Central Minnesota Continuum of Care, our local schools, and many others. And these levy funds are what makes that a reality to be able to do. We are traditionally able to leverage $15 to $20 for every dollar that the citizens of Clay County pay through their local property taxes in order to get these resources into the community, and we do that oftentimes in partnership. So the numbers that I provide to you are typically annual or biannual amounts that we are able to increase, but we don't talk about that ongoing commitment. The HRA brings in over $8 million in federal resources that are supported, as well as, we've discussed, a number of the state resources that are also at play. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yes, Commissioner Baer. How many... How many years have you been coming here and asking for this?
The first time we requested the levy was in '27 for 2008.
Have you been coming every year since?
We have not. The HRA Board of Commissioners, once again, takes a look. I don't want to speak on their behalf, but I think they carefully try to balance the needs in the community versus the costs to the taxpayers. So we have only come in in years that it was really critical, and when there were program opportunities in order to leverage significant resources to come into the community. So we look for funding in whatever way we can, and we're not in this to make any money. We're just trying to stay solvent. This is the 50th anniversary year of the HRA, and you will see we are not having any big celebrations. We're not investing in things that say 50th anniversary because we're looking to just meet the most critical needs and using all of our resources to meet those needs. I mentioned about a parking lot pavement last time. Well, it was because we're moving staff back to our main office, and we only had enough parking spots for our staff, and when our board meetings are there, it would leave one spot available, which would be accessible parking. And so we need to be accessible to the community, and so we have to make some of these things to be ADA compliant and be able to actually deliver services. But we try to focus all of our resources. We have one of the lowest administrative overhead costs that you will see. We normally operate at 5% to 7% overhead for administrative, where typically, you know, you see 10% to 15% at least with the most agencies. So we try to operate lean. Like I said, we're not here. I think my board would never support something that we were not doing just to try to maintain that solvency, along with leveraging those resources into the community.
Any other questions? When it comes to the... You had mentioned you're waiting to hear from Barnesville on the one point. Was that... Is that a grant through deed, or...
Yes, correct. It's federal funds to deed that are then competitively awarded.
When all of those things, when those applications are submitted, are there leverage dollars that are... by those communities that are also being put in?
Yes, sir. Barnesville has had, back in, I would say, the 70s, 80s, and 90s, they had done some of their own applications until it kind of became too complex and time-consuming, so that they had reached out to us. And so for funds that were leveraged back then and have been repaid, they're putting those in as well. So they...
And so...
And they also use staffing resources to assist with.
For example, the city of Morehead. Does the city of Morehead have... Are they putting anything in for leverage dollars towards homelessness?
Towards homelessness, yes.
And is it through the HRA, or...
Last year, I know it was through Clay County... I'm sorry, Churches United, but they also must consent to this levy since...
I saw that, but...
Citizens of Morehead would also...
I didn't know if they do anything similar to this within their own budgets, is what I'm asking.
Yes. They did award funds to Churches United, and then last year, they awarded funds to the HRA to assist with the front desk security... I'm sorry, with the security at a number of our properties within the city of Morehead. Those included Gateway Gardens, Fieldcrest Apartments, Boyer Apartments. I will look to Don. They also have contributed over $150,000 for leverage for improvements at the Riverview Heights High Rise, and so the city of Morehead is also making those investments, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah. I'll just make a couple overview comments. So I'm really pleased that I get to hear our monthly meetings. Also happy for the two group sessions we have. I thought what you added today from what we heard last Tuesday was helpful, some of it. A little bit of a repeat, but I picked up on a couple new items. I just... I guess I'm just impressed the way that you can leverage money and the amount of funds that are taking place, and the collaboration that I see happening mainly between you, CAP, and how that... and Churches United, I think is really kind of settled down. Some of the... Well, certainly some of the pressures that were existing only a few months ago. So you bring us in a positive direction, and congratulations on the new grant that you picked up also for what was at 1.7 million or what have been the one?
It was 2 million, but you...
Okay. All right. So just positive comments for your work.
If I can, Commissioner Mojo, and then I'll get to... I just wanted to comment briefly. Commissioner Baer raised a question about how often. I remember for quite some time, it was like an every-other-year type of a deal that requests came in. Not exact, but it's... it was that. I just wanted to mention on the availability of funds for homeowners to upgrade their housing. That's something that I've always supported. There's been... oftentimes, that might be the difference in them staying there, and it also might be the difference in that property becoming blighted to the point where it is a distraction to all the neighbors around them. So that part of that is, I've always felt, is a really good program, and it helps keep people in their homes. Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Thanks also for actively being part of our meetings every six months. I think it's been really helpful for us to make sure that we're providing feedback and understanding the issues that you're seeing, but also your presence at our small cities meetings. I think having you there has been helpful for the smaller cities to know how to reach out. I appreciate that you're helping with the staffing capacity on applications for... and navigating, really, the grant processes. You know, I constantly say, I go back to my 4H days on what our cost-per-wear type piece is, and I would challenge all departments, really, to make a dollar worth $25 coming in. I think that's phenomenal. That speaks to how well you know how to apply for those pieces and how you can take issues that we're seeing in our county and advocate for them. So I really appreciate that. I talked to you this week about making sure that we're using dollars that we receive in the most effective way to affect families in the best possible way, to affect retirees, all sorts of folks, so they can stay in their homes. And I spent a lot of time at the Capitol with the FM Chamber of Commerce, and one of the biggest pieces for the chamber and workforce development is housing. And we talk critically about how do we make sure we have the housing capacity in our communities to support our workforce needs. And so what you're doing really does that. I really appreciate that. And I think my closing piece is, it's not lost on me that I was late to this meeting because I was waiting for a school bus to pick up my children. And I think a lot of people in our county don't know that there are school buses in Clay County that pick up children at the homeless shelter. And your work, particularly with CAP-LP, really goes to strengthen those supports for kiddos that are in really challenging situations. It's really tricky for someone who is... that's not even in their realm of reality to understand how challenging those outcomes can be, and the funds in which you're utilizing to support those families really goes to take off a significant burden onto our already-demanding social services pieces. And so I also don't always love that we have to have levy requests, but most of the levy requests that we're going to talk about today do not bring in $8.1 million with $300,000. I mean, it's just... it's the nature of your work. So I always caution us to make sure, as I said, we're utilizing this in the best possible way to serve the people that we are. I continue to advocate that you work closely with our small cities, and when issues arise, that we're really responsive to those issues. But thanks for your work.
Commissioner Ebinger.
And just echo some of the thoughts that have been expressed, but portfolio includes homeless issues, and it is a tough nut to crack. The resources we have in this community, not just Clay County, but Cass and the immediate area, are stretched and often underfunded. And what your outfit did coming through for Churches United is acknowledged and appreciated. I was at Silver Linings opening, and you know, you're not going to cure the whole problem all at once, but that was a pretty big bite out of an area that's hard... a group that's hard to house and hard to maintain for them. The funding that you're putting on maintaining our older homes is critical. We have an aging housing stock, and if people aren't afforded the opportunity to keep their houses in repair, you'll see what you see in a lot of communities is these homes and neighborhoods that were developed in the 40s and 50s and 60s are going to start falling apart, and we'll go backwards on our meeting in needs of housing. It's a good investment, and it's tough for anybody here on this commission right now. We're looking at property taxes, and we realize Commissioner Campbell frequently says it's most regressive tax we've got to deal with, and it impacts in a very negative way on a lot of the people that you are serving. People of low income, elderly, and working-class people that are trying to get into homes. So we try and keep a lid on the taxes, but there comes time where you have to acknowledge the return on investment is very impressive with the HRA. So appreciate the work you're doing.
All right. There's maybe a question for Mr. Larson. Is this something that requires a resolution with a resolution number on it for something?
It does not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure of that. Commissioner Krabenhoff?
Just one more question also. So upon... Tell me the process here between us and your other entities. So you need approval from us as well as from the small cities, or what is it?
We will... We need a... You know, as with the HRA, everything's a little bit complicated. So under the state statute... Um, so under the state statute, we need approval from other communities that have a housing and redevelopment authority. Clearly, that's the city of Barnesville. Um, unclearly, it may or may not be the city of Moorhead, but as a courtesy, we always do go to Moorhead. Um, they have a public housing agency. I, I, we're not interested in having a legal debate about whether that qualifies or not, so we go and receive the consent or request the consent um, to that um, body as well. And that will, we're on the agendas for next Monday for both of those councils.
Okay.
I just, if I could follow up, I just, I was gratified. CAP LP and the HRA were on a call with Minnesota Housing last Thursday and the staff at Minnesota Housing, every once in a while it feels like we're not making progress at all. But they were like, we have confidence that you guys will be the first ones in the state to actually end child homelessness because of the commitment of all the partnerships, including the county. So that, that was nice to hear every once in a while.
Yes, Commissioner Bear.
You're asking for three hundred thousand on tax levy? Could you do less?
No. Um, if we could, we would. Uh, last year we requested, I believe, five hundred thousand. Um, and then we were able to work with the county on the state affordable housing aid. Um, like I said, we're not trying to make any money. We're just trying to stay solvent. And people have heard me say on a number of occasions that during the pandemic, we signif- we experienced significant losses. Um, in 2023, our um, net uh, available for investment declined by a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. In 2024, it declined by ninety thousand dollars. We spent our reserves. And if we still had reserves, we would be using, utilizing that in an attempt to bring in other outside resources. So no, we would have to stop operating some of these programs. That we do believe the return on the investment is worth it for the citizens.
Alright. What's the board's wishes?
Yeah. Well, I made a motion to approve the HRA and the county levy and flag special benefit tax of three hundred thousand for 2026.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kravenoff, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Sarah, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kravenhaft?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
No.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Aye.
Alright, my motion carries and the uh, levy request is granted. Thank you. Alright, next we have a um, budget presentation from probation. Find my paperwork here. Alright, good morning.
First I want to say, thanks for being patient uh, with me and trying to get this together. Um, a lot of this information is a little new to me in the last two weeks and I needed some time to.
Can you talk close to your mic?
Yep, sorry. I think this is always my problem. Yeah, so thank you uh, for giving me some time to put these numbers together so that I can, first of all, make sense of it myself and be able to provide you something that um, hopefully makes sense. It'll be a little complicated. I'll ask that you bear with me uh, through the presentation. Um, and if you have any questions, feel free at the end. Alright, um, so I want to open with the Funding Formula Statute, uh, 40110, and specifically A. Uh, the Funding Formula Statute for the state of Minnesota started uh, July 1 of 2023. The community supervision subsidy paid to each county. Uh, the commissioner for supervision of non-CCA jurisdictions served by the Department of Corrections and to each applicable tribal nation under paragraph E equal to the sum of. There's a base funding amount of a hundred and fifty thousand for each county. Uh, and there's a community supervision formula equal to the sum of. And then there's some language there that I'm going to get into. I'm going to break this down a little bit more so that it's hopefully a little easier to understand. And so the purpose of the community supervision funding formula is to reimburse expenditures tied to community supervision and community-based programming and services for persons involved in the justice system. Um, so that part of this slide is something I said last year. However, the funding formula has changed in the last year to include all of felony and misdemeanor supervision tied together. Um, the formula consists of the number of clients on supervision, uh, whether that's felony, um, you know, supervised release and probation. And then uh, you take that, the new part of the formula, it's the average of three years, so twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. That's new this year. Times a capitated rate, which is five point six two per individual on supervision, and then times per day. Um, historically, the funding formula was done as a whole for all on supervision. The only responsibility of the county was fifty percent of that number for contracted offices, so misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor and juvenile. And the funding formula has changed in 2026 to cover any overages in felony supervision. And so this is new. The capitated rate has remained constant. And so why has that changed? Uh, based on the 2025 data, the total appropriation needed to fully fund this formula statewide was a hundred and fifty-five million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. In 2025, the legislature appropriated one hundred and forty-three million, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, or ninety-one percent of what was required to cover the, the appropriation, which fell short by twelve million, five hundred and two thousand, or five hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. And so um, historically, when falling short, uh, the state has covered these costs for felony supervision. Uh, and it's my understanding that this year um, they aren't able to do that. And so those costs are falling back on the counties. I'll explain how much of a difference this will be. And then I'm also going to talk about some of the efforts I've made uh, to reduce this increase as much as I can. Okay, and so you can see for 2024, the salaries agent clerical, full and part-time, uh, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and three. That includes four point five agents that are contracted for gross misdemeanor supervision and three county support staff. In 2026, you can see on that side, it says a hundred and seventy-three. That's because we've removed the four point five agent positions from the county budget uh, because of the difference in the funding formula. I'll explain that in a little bit. Um, and then I'm going to explain a little bit later to um, how there's a reduction under STS, health insurance, para, social security, uh, rent, um, totaling. You'll see then that the, the expenditure, you can't see my mouse up there. The expenditure for 2024, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and fifty, and for 2026, three hundred and four thousand. And so what that means is I've taken the felony piece out of it now, uh, because the funding formula ties everything together. However, I'm still going to explain the difference should the funding formula never have changed, okay? And so this is exactly that. The total cost for salaries, and what I'm comparing to is 2024 because we don't have all of the information from 2025 yet. And so the best comparison is, I've got hard numbers from 24. Let's see how 2026 compares. So four point five uh, contract employee salaries, four thirty-eight. And since the funding formula came out, um, each county within the jurisdiction jointly and severally pays for a portion of an OAS senior position because the OAS senior covers all of the districts um, in the jurisdiction. And then um, the supervisor pay and management. And management, um, I'll talk about, a little bit more about what that, what is rolled up in that in a little bit. And so you pay a um, a, a small subcomponent of those overall costs. And so for 2024, that amounted to eighty thousand dollars. And so for, when you tie in the salaries and these management costs, in 2024, the county paid five hundred and eighteen thousand for uh, contracted supervision. In 2024, they paid nothing for felony supervision. If continued in 2026, utilizing the old formula, um, including, you know, COLA increases, salaries, raises and everything else, uh, four thirty-eight would have went to five ten. Uh, OAS supervisor and management would have went to ninety-three. And so that number would have been six hundred and four. And so when you think about that difference, just over those two years, there's been some increases. Um, and you're looking at roughly there, you know, eighty, eighty thousand, seventy-eight thousand dollars, which is something to think about. Um, so the funding formula, uh, to include all staff salaries, the subsidy from the state, the county subsidy, the base funding tied all together. The numbers are from a three-year average and this year for every county in the state, they're paying an ICOTS cost. And I'll show that on the next slide. So now on the next slide. ICOTS, it's like, uh, it's the system that the state utilizes to transfer individuals on supervision from one state to another. And there's a whole, there's a whole team that makes up that system that ensures that we're complying with federal law in that process. And so now there's a cost associated with that. And so on the next slide here, now I'm going to break down the funding formula, uh, the change uh, that we're going to see in 2026. And so this is how it works. I showed this last year. Um, people on felony adult supervision probation and supervised release numbers from 2021 to 2023, the average was six hundred and fifty uh, for Clay County. Times the capitated rate, times every day of the year, you end up with one million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand. For gross misdemeanor supervision, two eighty-one, times five sixty-two, times one year, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and fifteen point three. And as the statute identifies, that is, the county's responsibility is fifty percent of that number. So we take that five seventy-six and divide that by two to get two eighty-eight. Historically, when uh, the county was paying um, under the, under the old funding formula, we weren't including any overages in felony supervision, this kickback, this two eighty-eight comes back to the county. And I'll show you what you got in 2024, how that reduced um, what the county's response, overall responsibility was going to be. And so we add these numbers together, we get a total of one million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand. The legislature has agreed to not fully fund to the tone of roughly ninety-two percent. In comparison to twenty-four and twenty-five, they were at ninety-one point five. So it did go up a little bit. Um, that's good news. And so, but, but overall, that reduces that one million, six hundred to one million, four hundred. We add the base allocation that each county gets within the Department of Corrections, a hundred and fifty thousand, times that uh, times that ninety-two percent and you get a hundred and thirty-seven. Um, and so, and then we also have to minus, as I indicated, that ICOTS calculation. For Clay County, the ICOTS calculation is different for every county. As you can imagine, we're border, borderline one of the bigger cities outside of Minnesota. And so we are top five in the state for the number of interstate transfers that we do in and out of our district here, it seems like. Uh, adding all of that up, one million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, nine fifty-one is our subsidy for 2026. In comparison to 2025, a reduction of nine thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars. Probably think maybe that's where that ICOTS calculation came in there a little bit and that's why you're seeing somewhat of a little, a little reduction there. So what does the subsidy mean? Before I go there, I want to talk about 2024. In 2024, Clay County received two bills to, from the state totaling five hundred and eighteen thousand. And then when we added that to the county budget, the total was eight ninety-three, three fifty. We minus that state subsidy. And so in 2024, half of the misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor and juvenile numbers that we had talked about in the funding formula was two sixty-one. And so this year it's two eighty, so that's one up. So we minus this from uh, both the salaries of the contracted staff, the county budget, um, and you get a total of six hundred and thirty-two thousand oh six. That was the overall expense for supervision in 2024. So let's compare it to um, some of the changes that have been made in the last year. Now, since we don't focus solely on county staff, we rope all staff into the funding formula. So Clay count, Clay felony and contract staff wages totaling one point eight million. And that's for twenty-four agents, six support staff, or I'm sorry, three support staff because the county staff numbers are on a different spreadsheet. Um, the Clay DS, OAS, senior and management, two ninety-one, seven fifty-three. The sum of operation expense CE, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six eighty-one, fifty-two. And so that totals two million, two sixty-six, two oh six. Um, we also have one point five positions that are contracted, or not contracted, they're grant-funded positions through the state. And that's uh, you know, our, our newly developed DWI court and then half of our drug court. So we subtract those costs and we're down to two million, one forty-four, eight fifty. Now we subtract the state subsidy, the number that's generated by the funding formula. And what you're left with for the budget in 2026 is five hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight ninety-nine in comparison to the Clay County expense in 2024, two fifty-seven, two six six. Now, there won't be as big of a jump as there was when adding the county budget in 2024 to what those DOC expenses were in 2024. Um, and that's simply because of a lot of changes that have occurred in the county budget. And those changes are three hundred and four thousand, five eighty-six. And so the total expense uh, that we're, we're going to need to budget for, for 2026 is eight hundred and thirty-four eighty-five versus the six thirty-two oh six from 2024. So it's an increase of roughly two hundred thousand. Couple of things to take into consideration. Go ahead.
Just trying, as we go through these numbers, I'm trying to find out where the increases have been concealed. And if we could put the, oh, okay. On the, on the uh, Clay felony and contract staff wages, prior to this year, did we pay felony staff wages?
Nope.
So that's been added in?
A portion of it has been added in, is my understanding, yes.
Like eight point one or?
Well, for instance, the felony overages for 2025 for Clay County were over three hundred thousand dollars. And the Department of Corrections covered those in 2025 and every year prior.
Is there a higher number of felony cases, uh, given the policies of the Department of Corrections to try and do more community-based uh, sentencing? Is there a higher number of, of felony cases that are being brought into us now than maybe the last five-year average?
No, I would say that uh, in, in this district, the, the numbers trend down. You know, it's our goal to follow best practices. Um, if somebody is doing very well on supervision, they've completed the conditions for the court, um, they're very motivated and they're confident in their ability to make major life changes. Uh, you know, working with the prosecution and the defense, we've moved towards early discharge of supervision. Um, and that's what best practice shows us. For somebody who's extremely low risk on supervision, keeping them on supervision for longer periods of time can end up problematic. And I'm paraphrasing, you know, there's a lot of data behind that and stuff.
In effect, that would reduce the number of felony.
It does reduce the number of felony people on supervision.
Okay, even if more are coming out, more are getting off, off probation earlier?
People that are low risk of recidiv- recidivating in the community, people that are low risk of continuing their status quo behavior are more likely to get off of supervision early than somebody that's high risk.
The increase or the shift of funding for some of these felony cases to the counties, is that contained in statute or was that a function of the budget?
It's a function of the budget.
So there's nowhere in statute that says eight point two or whatever proportion uh, will be shifted to the counties?
It's, it's a, it's a function of the Department of Corrections. It's, it's a, it's a function of the Department of Corrections. And so, you know, the funding formula is very clear as to what those expenses will be for each county. And in putting that together, there's nothing in statute, to my knowledge, that had said that the Department of Corrections is responsible for those overages. I think it's really unfortunate, the budget situation that we're in this year. And so this is, this is where we're left with. Granted, I found out this in two weeks. Looking at the situation that we're in, we have a little bit of time before the end of the year. I've been working closely with Steve and Lori to really take a good look at this, to see if there's any other moves that we can make to diminish this as much as possible. I cannot speak to the future of the funding formula. You hear things. And I'll get to that at the end of the presentation here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair. If I could, as Dale said, we've worked closely. We've run this budget backwards, forwards multiple times. And, and again, under, I mean, I think this is a great example of not shooting the messenger. Dale's been great. As he mentioned, kind of at the beginning of this, we were, had planned to come to you about a month ago. And after we presented, he, he received some information that, that there was going to be a tweak. And so we've pulled that and been meeting, meeting since. I think to kind of one of the points of, of concern of this, well, there are several points of concern, but I think one of the challenging parts that's disappointing is the funding's based on the number of people that are on probation. And as Dale has mentioned, they've received a lot of recognition across the state for their ability to take those low-risk recidivism rate individuals and move them off. And so the ironic part of this and this shift is we're, we're almost now as a county being penalized because of the great work that they're doing.
Ditto.
So how was, to that point, how was that vetted or who, who does that?
That's a very good question. I don't have the answer to that question. And, you know, this is something that I've found out in the last two weeks. I'm, my guess would be the Commissioner of Corrections and the powers that be above. That is definitely something I could provide you more information on. I think when I've initially received the funding formula information and the changes, I mean, I had tunnel vision, so trying to work this out.
No matter what, I'm just saying, as far as statewide, other counties, do, do you feel there's quite a few others in the same spot we are?
Yeah, I think many counties are going to see an increase this year. Go ahead.
I haven't, I haven't really seen any comparison. I mean, we talked about, on here, we talked about 2026 versus 2024. I haven't really seen anything comparison for 2026 versus 2025 other than this sheet that you have, that, that we've got presented to us. I don't know if Steve put that down for us. But when all is said and done, what I am seeing here, the proposal that we have on here that says after adjustments for 2026, the expenditures, less the grants, total 755,637. And that compares to the same number of 611,016 for 2025, which means that we're, we're asking, it's being asked for an increased levy of 144,641. Does that, do those numbers sound, I mean, that's what, that's what, that's what we have in front of us here.
So we have, the county has not yet been billed for 2025. And so it's hard for me to make that comparison. You know, I like to work with Lori to get those hard numbers to work with so that I can, you know, the information that I'm presenting is as factual as it possibly can be. And so we're waiting for the end of the billing cycle for 2025.
Do you want a calendar year?
What's that?
When you say a billing cycle for the state, is that a, is that a calendar year? Is it a fiscal year? I'm assuming they're fiscal, right?
We, we bill from January to June and then from July to December. And so on this slide here, I showed you that. Good luck finding it here. That's right, here. From January to June in 2024, you're billed 263,991. From July to December, 255,619.
And so the second half of the bill for 2025, the county has not received yet.
Correct.
Okay. So the numbers that you have or that we have here, that they, somebody had.
Those are budgeted estimations.
Those are, those are what is anticipated to be the totals.
Yep, and for 2025, you know, taking into consideration that, that that was put together under the old funding formula, the overages for 2025 will be covered by the Department of Corrections, is my understanding. So this is only the budget for 2026. I do got a couple of slides left.
Okay, go ahead.
At the bottom here, you know, something that's new. It's not a budget outline item for us. It's, you know, this is more so for the general fund. But the felony probation office rent, you know, in the last year, we've moved the felony supervision into the courthouse. That helps kind of alleviate, I would hope to some degree, the overall cost of the county and to the tune of over 70,000 as well. So when you think about that. So what changed in 2025 in the county budget? The state ended their STS program. The county was responsible for three quarters of the salary of that position. The contract office rent will decrease by 11,000. When we, in 2026, hopefully by the end of October, the contract office will move into the family service center. And it's a little bit of a smaller space. I think it'll fit them, their needs well. But that's a reduction of 11. Decreased to proposed health insurance, decreased to para, decreased to social security. And so we add all of these up in looking at some of the difference just in the county dollars. I'm looking at a relative decrease of around 170,000. And so that impacts it to that 200. Without some of those changes, you know, you could imagine that we were looking at 350. I want to talk a little bit about the benefits of partnering with the Department of Corrections.
Just one minute, Dale.
Yep.
So those states, they look like, is it less employees then?
Yeah, that we have one less employee.
Okay.
Yep.
That would have been non-Charlotte.
Part of it, yep, for sure, absolutely. And so the benefits of partnering with the DOC, you pay a subcomponent of these overall costs. CSTS is a software program that we use within the department for supervision. There's costs associated. LSCMI is our assessment tool in the state of Minnesota. We have an evidence-based practices unit of trainers, five individuals from the Department of Corrections. With employee development, human resources, HR, background checks, recruitment, retention, performance management, FMLA, workman's compensation, housing support unit. We have a work group to support homeless and struggling populations. We have an IT, you know, we have Minute. They're responsible for the laptops, monitors, servicing fees, printer, you know, all of those things. Legal affairs, supportive defensive litigation, should the county ever need. Planning and performance unit, workload studies, recidivism studies, data request needs. Safety administrator, body armor, safety gear for the field, self-defense training, verbal de-escalation. We have a support staff or a support and wellness committee, peer support, training initiative to promote a healthy lifestyle. And so these are some of the things that are tied in by contracting with the department where you pay not a full cost associated with that. And that's, those are, those are some pretty significant benefits. And finally, I just want to talk about some of the collaborative projects that we've been working on in the last year. Right now, I'm part of the, or I was, we've kind of come to the end of this, the CSTS planning phase three committee. And so the Department of Corrections has been working with other districts in the state to put our software program together to really meet the needs of the efforts that we're, we have going for evidence-based practices. And the DOC has been a major proponent for these changes to occur. And they align specifically with our case planning, with our case planning projects. Domestic violence response committee, I've talked about that in the past. We have a risk needs work group and a Minnesota pre-screener. So the Department of Corrections is working on utilizing a screening tool to screen out individuals on supervision who are ultimately low risk so that we don't have to go through vetting them for the entire case planning process. Saves time amongst other things. We were working with an IDA pilot, targeting specific individuals who have been convicted of DWI to focus on what are their drivers and reducing their risk. ACJI, we've been working with implementation science. And so as you can imagine, some of the struggles of any department when trying to change what you're doing in your department, it can be really problematic. And what we found is, you know, I'm going through ACJI and being trained on implementation science. That's been extremely beneficial. Other EVP initiatives, we have an enhanced sex offender supervision roadmap. So the strategies that we use to target case planning with those convicted of a sex offense, it's really been targeted in the last year. And then that also rolls over into general supervision roadmap, DWI court, drug corp, and many of the local, you know, committees that are involved in, CAP LP, suicide substance use, safe harbor response, mental health collaboration. So new in 2026, the contract office will be moved to the family service center, reducing those rent costs as I talked about. The felony office has relocated to the courthouse, providing revenue to the county. And again, to your point, Dave, and this is something that I wanted to touch on, was the potential legislative changes to the funding formula to benefit early discharge circumstances and department effectiveness are conversations that we're having behind the scenes, you know, these, we're trying to get momentum because I know what we're doing here in this county is extremely effective. So there you go, that is it. Any questions at all?
Commissioner Ebbinger.
Just an observation. Dale, you have come in and your performance since you've come to this has been very impressive. And this is not a reflection on you. But I have serious concerns with the ability of something that's not buried in, in, in an omnibus bill or some sort of legislation we didn't see coming, but an administrative decision that impacts on every county in this state and impacts on, on our taxpayers once again with the most regressive tax system we have in the state to offset either bad bill keeping or underfunding. And it's not our responsibility to bail them out. We have a legislative conference coming up with Association of Minnesota Counties. And we are going to have a discussion in the public safety panel on this. I would like if you could do it, if you could send Steve your slides. And Steve, if you could get them out to us. I think that it gives some, some perspective because this is pretty vague stuff. And I think you've, you've done a good job of working with our auditor and with Steve and trying to identify where the, the, the funding is going and what direction we need to anticipate. But this is not how things are supposed to operate. If we get hit with something like this and our costs shift, and that's what this is, it should be something contained in legislation that's out in the open. And there's no transparency in this through no fault of viewers. But I find it very disturbing that the state can knock counties back on their heels trying to figure out how to pay the bills with something like this. And I think it needs to be discussed openly and the public needs to be made aware. You're doing a good job of helping people turn their lives around and get back out in the, in society, pay taxes and take care of their families. I get it. And the people in the, in the correction process need to be given those opportunities. But it also needs to be paid for. And there needs to be an agreement on how we're going to do that, not just a little September surprise. So I appreciate your presentation, but the concerns are still there.
Yeah, and I, and I understand that. You know, we've got, like I had said, some time before 26 comes around. And I'm going to continue to work hard to look on ways to reduce the impact to Clay County.
Commissioner Ebbinger, I believe, Sarah's already sent the PowerPoint by email to everybody on the board.
Thanks.
All right, anything else?
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you.
All right, next we have the request approval for the 2026 ancillary insurance offerings. Good morning, Anna.
Good morning. As I mentioned last week, I'm here today to discuss the 2026 ancillary benefits and request approval or support of the insurance committee. So you should all have a packet. That is, we will kind of go through page by page. There should be some red and blue on there. Perfect. So the first page is going to be the hospital indemnity insurance. So I should back up just a little bit. During the RFP process, we went out, not only for health insurance, which we discussed last week, but all of our ancillary benefits. And every single benefit for 2026 is being recommended from the insurance committee for a change. So the first one is hospital indemnity insurance. This is actually a new offering in 2026, completely voluntary to the employee. So they are not required to take it. But in the event that they are, they elect this insurance and they are hospitalized, they would get a set payment from the insurance carrier. Like I said, it's voluntary. There is no additional cost to Clay County. It would just be the employee's cost should they take it. The insurance committee did vote 10 to 1 to recommend adding that insurance for 2026. Any questions on the hospital insurance? The next insurance offering that the insurance committee wanted me to bring forward is going to be critical illness insurance. Changing from our current carrier, Madison National Life, to standard in 2026. There is a pretty significant cost savings to that as well. It is voluntary, so the employee does not have to take it. And there is no cost to Clay County to offer it. That did pass the insurance committee for standard specifically on a vote from seven to four. Any questions on critical illness? Okay, we'll keep on going through then. They're all hopefully pretty simple. And the next one is accident insurance. We currently offer this through Madison National Life, suggesting a change to the company standard. There is a savings on every single policy, every single tier, I should say, for the accident insurance. Again, voluntary to the employee and no cost to the employer. That passed the insurance committee from a six to five vote. Almost there. Dental, so this is probably the biggest one. So we have had Delta Dental for about the last five years. Prior to that, we had Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Dakota. And we are proposing making a carrier change from Delta Dental to United Healthcare for 2026. With this change, we would be off, or the plan would offer implants. That's been something that the committee and employees have been asking for the last couple of years. And then for an additional 97 cents per month, the employee can choose to essentially buy up or pick a better, not necessarily a better tier, but they can select a different tier of coverage that would include orthodontic coverage for their dependents under the age of 19. So one other thing with dental, we are currently self-insured. And we've been operating claims over revenue. So we are, we are in a situation that we'd either have to increase our Delta Dental premiums or make this switch. If we make this switch, we would be fully insured with the carrier. So the carrier would take on that risk. That did pass the insurance committee with a vote of 13 to zero. Vision insurance, we currently have a VISA. So we've had a VISA for many years. The committee is recommending a change to United Healthcare. There would be approximately a 7% savings to the member. And one additional feature that was added to this plan would be the actual exam. So our health insurance covers the eye exam for any individual that is enrolled on the health insurance. But if you have a dependent that is not on our health insurance, but you cover them on vision, they would now have an exam covered or with a small copay. So that passed the insurance committee with a vote from 11 to two. Long-term disability, the insurance committee is also recommending a carrier change from our current carrier, Madison National Life, to United Healthcare. And that passed the insurance committee with a vote of 10 to zero. Again, completely voluntary to the employee, no additional cost to Clay County. And then lastly, And then lastly, short-term disability, the insurance committee is also recommending a change from Madison National Life to United Healthcare, premium savings voluntary to the member, and that passed with a 10 to 1 vote. With that, I'll open it up for any questions.
All right, any questions, Anna? I guess at this, you know, I guess if there's no questions, I would like to maybe see a motion to accept the insurance committee's request on all the ancillary benefits for 2026.
I make a motion to support the insurance committee's recommendations for the 2026 ancillary insurance offerings.
I'll second the motion.
Right, we have a motion by Commissioner Krabunoff, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion on the motion? All clear? All right.
Thank you.
All right, well, we got a vote.
Do this every time.
Don't thank you yet. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. What was the same? Motion carried? All right, now you're good.
Okay, I'll try not to do that this time.
Okay, that's no problem. And then so next then we have the discussion and approval for the paid family medical leave.
Yes, so as we are all aware, this has been in the works for the last couple of years now. The state of Minnesota is passing a paid family medical leave program with implementation on January 1 of 2026. In the state proposal, they do allow employers to go out and shop the private market, so we did just that for comparison. In front of you, you guys should see a comparison between United Healthcare, MetLife, and paid family medical leave. The state rate is at a .88, and the two proposals that we received from United Healthcare and MetLife beat that state proposal pretty significantly. The one that administration is recommending is the United Healthcare. But not only would that kind of partner and piggyback off of some of the ancillary plans for kind of a seamless claim process for our employees, the rate is coming in at a .71% instead of a .88. Significant savings there. This data in front of you is based off a point in time. So we ran this about two weeks ago, and at that time, we had 713 employees. So as we grow or as people leave, that number will fluctuate a little bit. It is also based off the current wage that the individuals are being paid today, not off of anticipated COLA or anything for 2026, since we don't know what that is yet. So the proposed cost for paid family medical leave with United Healthcare would be $333,000 compared to the state program of $412,000. That is going to be a 50-50 split between the employer and the employee. So under United Healthcare, approximately $167,000 to the employer, $167,000 to the employee, again, an estimate just because we don't have the 2025 rates yet.
Just for clarification, Anna and Steve, I do not believe the board has taken action on the 50-50 split either yet, have we?
That's, yeah, there's been no discussion.
Legislation, it's been our, you know, what we've been anticipating from the budget standpoint, but I think there will also need to be board action to actually confirm that.
Sure. And I know that, I don't want to speak for Darren here, but I know that in the union negotiation process, that's being vetted through all the unions and the negotiations right now, too.
But the Paid Family Leave Act is outside of the cafeteria plan.
Correct, yes. No, the paid family medical leave has no connection to our health insurance or the county contribution. There are going to have to be discussions that occur at PIC, hopefully in just a couple of weeks, on if we are going to continue to offer sick leave, a sick leave donation policy here in Clay County. Right now, employees that need, extend a leave of absence can request donations where their peers donate time to them. So under this new program where they could have potentially up to 20 weeks through the private or the state, we'll have to see if that is still something the county wants to offer. And the other thing that is currently written in statute is that we cannot require an individual to, if they submit a claim through paid family medical leave, we cannot require them to use their sick or vacation. So they can choose to have, being paid by this company and unpaid by Clay County. We can offer them, so something that the PIC and the board will have to decide is if we want to allow the employees to supplement their time and use their accrued sick-in-vacation, but we cannot mandate that. So that'll be going to PIC in just a couple of weeks.
Mr. Chair, Anna, maybe if you could explain, the paid family leave essentially doesn't cover the full amount, is that's why?
Correct. So paid family medical leave will pay up to 2/3 of the individual's wage, kind of depends on their salary and whether they make more than the statewide weekly average or less than the statewide weekly average, but they will not receive 100% of their pay from the state or the private plan.
Wouldn't you say that is 100% of their gross pay?
Correct, yes. Sorry, I had to think that through for a second. So they, the other reason with the, kind of backing up to the ancillary benefits with long-term and short-term disability and accident falling under United Healthcare, if an individual submits one claim and they have multiple plans, it's one claim and the company takes care of that. They don't have to submit a claim to each different carrier. So it saves them some paperwork. We would still run FMLA concurrently with that, so getting in the weeds a little bit there, but they can, they will not be paid, whether they have these ancillary coverages or not, they will not make more than 100% of their gross wage.
So from a standpoint of administrative work and choosing the, who we're going to have as the carrier for our paid family medical leave insurance, is that something that you would also just assume have sooner rather than later in preparation? I suppose auditor's office would like to have it and...
Yes. The one piece with the state program is the state's never done this before, so it's new to them, whereas United Healthcare and MetLife have been offering a similar-like benefit in many other states for many years, and so they at least have some knowledge administratively. The paperwork on that side will be cleaner, but from our end, yes, we do have to make some decisions. We have some to make, legally have to make policies based off of statute and such, too.
All right, action for today, I think, would be then to accept the administration's recommendation to go with United Healthcare for the paid family leave insurance. Is that correct, Steve?
Yes, that's correct. And Mr. Chair, just to clarify for the board, we had this conversation internally, is while this is a two-year contract, it does have the ability, we know there's a lot of uncertainty with paid family medical, and so in the event that something were to change on the state level, I guess most likely that it would dissolve. We would not be responsible to continue to pay either of these entities, so.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, so we have a request to approve the United Healthcare for paid family medical leave.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve and move forward with United Healthcare for 2026 and I suppose 7, if that, if it's two-year.
Two-year rate cap.
Yeah, okay.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ebber, second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion on the motion? Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carried. Oh, yes, yes.
Thanks, Anna, for these two items. I know that a lot of discussion has gone forward, so I really appreciate all your work on that. And then my side comment is for the public following along, this is the second agenda item in a row in which we're seeing state shifted costs onto counties in the tune of $200,000 to $300,000 to $400,000. Just for the members of the public, these are mandates.
All right, thank you, Anna. All right, next we have the reapproval of the, to fill the public health administrator position.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned, last week, I did receive notice from Kathy McKay of her intent to retire at the end of this month, and so we are looking to fill that position. As in each position of significant retirement, we took this opportunity to take a look at the administrative role and the duties that were part of and responsibilities that this position held, and looked, I guess, this item and the next two items, or the next item, are kind of a combination of that. And so what we're looking at, we took the, had Darren and Anna look at the job description. They scored it based on the matrix that we have. With the next item would be having the detox withdrawal management director position moved to a standalone. And with that, with that adjustment, we would be looking at an adjustment from a grade 26 to a, excuse me, from a grade 27 to a grade 26. And so we would, if you look at the wage calculator, there is going to be some, due to longevity, there's going to be some payout that's going to come with this, and so we don't anticipate necessarily a savings this year. We would be looking at hiring, most likely at a different step than grade one, what the level of experience that we would be looking for in this position. And so with that, I would yield for any questions.
And Mr. Chair, or Mr. Administrator and members, the PIC committee talked about this, we had a special meeting on this, and one of the, one of the things that was discussed about, would be about making detox standalone, and I know it's something that Commissioner Baer, you would, you had been bringing up, and we thought, you know, there's, that's the best time to do those things is when you see a resignation in a department head. And, you know, so really, in order to make the request to prove the public health administrator position, we, there's two things we need to know. Is it going to be under the old scenario where detox would still be under it? Or is it going to be without, as you mentioned, if detox is going to become a standalone, then the public health director position switches grades by one, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
So, you know, so I think that two go hand in hand, and so it...
Should we, Mr. Chair, should we do number eight first then?
Well, that's, and that's kind of, I'm thinking maybe that might be helpful. We're kind of intercombining items number seven and eight here, and that was kind of, in our PIC committee meeting, I think that was kind of what we were recommending would be that, the first step would be to make detox its own independent department. And again, we're talking, part of the reason for that is there's what, some 70-some employees?
75 employees.
Involved with that one. And so, so the recommendation from PIC was to do that. And so I would agree with you, that would probably be the, we should probably do that one first. Well, I think we can, I just think we can maybe move into item number eight and act on that one first. And I, and I don't know, Steve, did you want to give any more?
No, Mr. Chair, I think just a brief, brief comment, this also, then, with the shift in responsibility, we've, we actually, as the chair mentioned, we talked about this in PIC previously, the PIC felt that, again, once it, wouldn't make sense to make an adjustment until we had some movement within the public health department. Darren and Anna, again, took this into our matrix with the level of responsibility that's changed from the bed capacity to the number of employees, to the complexity of the issues. This position moved from a grade 22 to a grade 25. And so the cost impact to this year's budget would be additional $2,450. That's all I have to add, Mr. Chair.
So making this change, so we would have, the public health administrator would be a grade difference of one, the new detox with its director supervisor would go up three grades.
That's correct.
Because they would become the new supervisor.
And just for clarity for the board, there would still be a connection, there would still be, need to be a connection both with public health and to social services as we have now, but the decision-making portion of that would sit with the director.
All right, so I guess I would like to, like us to maybe act on the detox as a standalone department first.
All right, then I'll make a motion to make detox and WM a standalone department and reclassify the detox director position.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Baer, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion on that motion?
One comment, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I believe this is the right time to do this with Kathy McKay retiring and separating those two departments, making them two departments.
Very good. Any other comments?
Maybe I'll just ask in that discussion, where do we view the main benefits of the separation?
Mr. Chair, commissioners, I think that one of the challenges that we have as, with the growth of that facility, I think that the streamlined decision-making is extremely important. Again, while there is a connection there, you know, the facility is now located on 15th Avenue North, it's no longer at the family service center, and I think that that position, the position there has the, probably the need at 75 employees, up to 75 employees, to be able to make those decisions in a much timely fashion.
And with that, each director will be doing their own hiring of nurses?
That's correct. He's part of that position currently, does those things. And so that, from an operation standpoint, the major difference will be that the director will make the decisions versus channeling some of the other facility operation questions through someone else.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you.
I might also look at what the cost is in regards to the two departments separating them. And when you think about how valuable our public health director's time is, certainly that savings will be realized tenfold, I believe, in regards to how that time is managed, especially as large as detox has become.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carried. All right, now we can go back to filling the public health administrator position.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Thank you. I'm looking at the notes in the salary calculation worksheet. So my understanding is there will be, the grade will go from 27 to 26, and due to removing, is it two or one?
Removing one grade from a 27 to a 26.
But because of removing detox and another, or?
Detox, I think there's another discussion that will take place probably next week that we're continuing to look at evaluating, evaluating public health.
Okay.
We don't have that before you this morning.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Thank you. I might also just comment, I know we honored Kathy for her years of service today, but I think the work in which she, or the time and the work that she gave to our county is very valuable, and certainly there was a time, probably much to everyone's dismay, particularly Kathy, that she had to come every week to give updates to the community on what we were seeing in regards to COVID and the spread of COVID. Really appreciate all of the work that she's given. I know that was a very difficult time, but we certainly appreciated the presence that public health was throughout Clay County, and I'm just really excited for her and her retirement.
All right, so the PIC committee did make the recommendation to hire a public health administrator position with the understanding of the change in duties and responsibilities. Commissioner Ebinger.
Mr. Chair, I've moved to fill the public health administrator position due to Ms. McKay's retirement.
And that says presented by Administrator Larson?
Correct.
Are we anticipating backfill?
There potentially would be backfill, so if we could include that, that would...
Yeah, we'd include that in the motion.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carried. All right, we will take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
All right. We are now in our 9:45 item here, the 2026 budget discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we continue towards setting our preliminary levy on September 16th, we're here today to have some additional discussions and, and guidelines and directives from this board on, on where we're at. As you recall, several weeks ago, we came before you with a presentation with, with the requests that we had at the time and anticipated a levy document of 12.75 percent. Obviously, you guys said that that was not acceptable. And so we went, went back to work. There are several things here that make this a little bit challenging. At the time, we did not have our insurance information, which we now do. We also do not have a COLA because we're in union negotiations at this time. And so that has also provided a little bit of a challenge. I would like to say that generally I have Ms. Lori Johnson around her treasure with us today. She is helping Cass County, North Dakota, hire their new finance director with the interview process. And so unfortunately, she is not here. I have a packet of information that I sent out with the agenda today, talking about our fund balance at the end of last year. The updated summary of 2026 tax levy by funds, a summary of revenues and expenses by departments through 66 percent of 2025. It is through the end of August, and also sales tax through July, and also the non-county requests. And so if I could, we'll probably get to the fund balance, but if I could skip, skip to the summary of the 2026 tax levy document. Just wanted to start there with our discussion this morning. As you, as you can see, there was a number of adjustments that we're no longer at 12.75. There were, there were some adjustments that, that were made, and then also some that are being recommended as a starting point. And so if I could, just to highlight a few of the different items that, that have changed and/or what is still included within, within the new levy, net levy increase, which is now at 9.47. This week, based on, or last week, based on the board's action of, of accepting the insurance with Medica, the portion of savings that the county is experiencing is $425,974.53. And so we were able to back that out of last year's 2025's cost to the county. We did, we did not know where we were going to be. And so we had about $300,000 set aside, anticipated increase for, for, for insurance. And so we were able to then remove that $300,000 from the budget. Ms. Johnson is, has been watching, watching the, the, excuse me, our interest rates, adjustments that have happened, our proposed adjustments. But as of right now, she went back and looked at projected increase, projected increasing the revenues for our investments of roughly $500,000. And so she was able to make that adjustment. Again, if she were here, one of the things that she'll say, depending on what happens over here in the next three months, there could be another, another adjustment increase if we do not see a big or significant decrease or change of, change of path in, in interest rates. We also, we, within this budget, there are, are some increases, or excuse me, inclusions that we have in there, just to be clear. We have, we have $250,000 for future insurance needs. This board roughly four budget cycles ago started putting away $250,000 in anticipation of either going to self-insurance or to address any significant, significant increased cost once we were done with our four-year contract. It does include $250,000 for paid family medical. We just heard from Anna that that could be, again, a little bit different, a little bit lower. And we'll have that number, be able to lock that number in come December. This board, or this, this discussion that we took place the last time indicated that while we don't have a, a COLA established for the budget, we do have a 3% in there as a placeholder. And just keeping in mind from the board's perspective that based on our budget, our staffing plans, we have each COLA increase, percentage increase is $444,756. This includes all county, this budget includes all county, non-county requests at the asking amount, including the chamber at 185, rural routes from CAP LP at 56,778, and the Barnum and Dale ambulance at 75,000. There's a handout within your packet that shows the other requests that have been made this year. It did, earlier today, we did have a presentation from Dale from probation, based on what we know of as of right now. Lori has put in the increase for probation as, as anticipated within the budget. And also just a note, if you look on the levy sheet as a, as a additional revenue, Lori has $500,000 use of fund balance. As we, as we, we continue to have discussions moving forward, just keep in mind with the fund balance document that in our, on our general, general fund this year, we utilized $1 million out of the general fund. We've used a half a million dollars out of public health and $350,000 in social services. If you take a look at the summary of revenues and expenditures by departments, historically, we've, we've kept up to date with this several times per year. Overall, our budget looks very solid. Again, this is through August. We have 66 percent. Again, our revenues generally trail anywhere from six weeks to two months behind. And so our, our main focus to this point, or during these reviews, mostly focus around our, our expenses. Again, when we look at the 66 percentile, there's different areas that we only, we only do certain times per, per year rather than monthly. I think the three areas that stand out here are, number one, in planning zoning, they're at 93 percent of their budget. Earlier this year, the, the board approved the use of riparian aid to, to purchase pictometry that would benefit multiple, multiple departments. And, and so that's, that increase, both, both the grounds and building and the county building are, are up significant areas. And those relate to the probation area fit up. And again, if you recall, the state is going to be reimbursing us for some of that fit up. And so there'll be a revenue there at a later time. And emergency management is at 138 percent. And ARPA, ARPA, the last remaining dollars of ARPA show up there in, in the expense piece. So with that, the other areas, look within the timeframe, those again, that are higher are generally either paid on a quarterly basis or on an annual basis. And so those that are at 100 percent generally are one, one-time, one-time payments. So from, from an expenditure standpoint, I would say that the county is, is in good position with going through about 67 percent of the year. If that had yielded for any questions on the, any expenditures or revenues? I think there is, there is an increase. If you look at social services, on that second page, there is an income maintenance, we have, we're a little higher at 71. Again, reminder that there's the revenues that come in with that. So as you see, we're, we're in a situation where the expenditures, expenditures are higher, but so are the revenues as to where we are during, during the year.
All right. Any questions? Comments? Yeah, go ahead. Commissioner, Commissioner Mojo.
Thanks. Okay. Well, I, a couple of things I said earlier, cost shifts from the state really suck. And maybe on my soapbox, cities are dealing with these, school districts are dealing with these, but I don't know if anyone is dealing with them in the magnitude in which counties have to. I'll say there's some, you know, we were happy that some of the legislative pieces seemed to rectify themselves by the end of the session so that the hit on counties was not near what we thought they were going to be, but they're still substantial. You know, I, I know we've communicated with our departments that we wanted to see minimal increases this year because of the hardships that we, or the uncertainties rather, that are coming with so many different components hitting counties as they were. So I, you know, I appreciate the 146 seems like a nominal increase in regards to what we've seen in the past. But the fact is that we're still seeing, you know, over $4 million in changes from what the 25 was to 26.
Four and a half million.
Pardon?
Four and a half million.
Right. You know, and county program aid went down. And so that's, that's tricky. And how do we figure out the best way to address that? You know, I'm, I'm hearing from county residents, a couple of things. They appreciate the level of service that they, they're provided from county staff. We try really hard to address those needs. But I'm also hearing from folks enough is enough. We can't take the burden of tax, taxing to the level that we are seeing, which is why I think Clay County took a more active stance in, in lobbying for legislative changes because we couldn't take anymore. I was just in a University of Minnesota Advisory Committee, and the university does a lot of the mediation between farmers in regards to debt consolidation for, with bankers. And they are seeing more cases than they've ever seen of, of farmers that are in really challenging hugely significant negative consequences with finances. So I, I know that we can't go much more for what is being asked of farmland. But I look, look at some of the things, and I know we've got till December, and I look at some of the things that are still outlined, and they're really significant. I mean, we're talking all of the negotiations with our unions. And that is a huge piece on this. So I don't know how, you know, I don't want, I will not support what we're, we're projecting in regards to the final levy. But I don't know how we go much lower for the preliminary, knowing all those big pieces that are out there. And then my final piece is, you know, I think we still need to discuss all of this, but my final piece is, you know, I, I would like to propose, just from me personally, knowing where we're at, 26, a 0 percent increases on our external agencies. And I know that's tricky for me because I serve on some of these committees, and I know that there's tricky for other people. But, you know, I just, I know some of these folks came to us with, with reserves. And so maybe this year might be a year to dig into reserves for the external agencies, so.
I'll go next, Mr. Chair.
All right. And Mr. Bear?
Echoing what Commissioner Mojo said, I've, I've also heard it from my constituents, enough is enough on raising this levy even higher every year after year. So if we could, you know, figure out a way to, right now, we're looking at if we lock it in at 9.47, knowing that's just contingency. But if, if we could lock that in lower than that, and even get it lower than that by December, also with external agencies, I'd also echo what she said, would not to give anybody a raise on there. And if some of those even reduce them completely, like, I'll, I'll say it, CAP LP's rural routes transportation program, for the bang for the buck on what that costs per rider, I, I think that we've tried it. It's been tried many years. It just, I, I think it works, but it's, it's not worth the dollar amount that the county is subsidizing that program with. So that, that could be a cut there. We could save money there. And then the rest of those external agencies, cap them from what they got last year, if not reduce them by 5 percent, because it is, it is a tough year right now for budgets. That's, that's pretty much what I'm echoing on this sheet right now. See where we can get from there. And if we have to tap into the fund balances of social services to help offset some of this levy, that I believe there's money in that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Larson, but there's money in there that we could app into off the fund balance.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bear, if you take a look at your fund balance document, you know, our, our, our general fund, our road and bridge, social services, building, internal service and public health are, are part of, excuse me, internal service are part of the levy. Public health is part of the levy, but it's generally a plug number that, that is utilized. The, the rest of them are outside of that. And so we do have, you know, we do have a fund balance that this board has chosen to utilize almost every year over the last decade. If, taking the position, if we've asked, asked of our citizens already to, to look at that. I would note, I know, again, Mr. Chair loves when I say this about, about the, the state auditor, but they do suggest that we have five and a half months of general fund dollars, or excuse me, within the general fund, or in each of these funds. We have, we have a fund balance of $18,121,635. And we've gone into detail, the, the bottom section down at the bottom of the page shows what those adjustments were based off. A significant portion of it was a market adjustment in, back in our favor that we lost otherwise between 22 and 23. The unassigned document, the unassigned funds that we have in the general fund are just under $13 million. From a perspective of the state auditor, the unassigned for 2024, where the state auditor would like to have us seen was at 16 million. And with the, with the estimated increase for 25 of another 800,000. Keep in mind of that 18.1 million, we utilized $1 million towards this budget. In social services, we used $350,000 of that. And also in public health, we used a half a million dollars from, from the, the fund balance in those.
And those fund balances still grew?
Yes. Other than social services, they did, they did see an increase. Again, just of note, if Lori were here, she would make sure that I pointed out in public health, where what we want the board to compare to is the COVID construct, COVID and also then construction of the withdrawal management detox facility, of looking at comparing really from 2022 to 2024. So that's, that, but again, as you pointed out, Mr. Chair, there is, there is an increase there. So, so there are fund, there are fund balance dollars to, to utilize. You've looked at those over the last, over the last, well, like I said, 10 years. I've had a different, different combination based on where you felt, felt comfortable.
Steve, just real quickly on public health alone, so the numbers that are there are showing 18 million. And then there's obviously the 2023, 2024 detox dollars go out of there. And when you subtract that, that number gets to 8.8 million. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so when you compare 8.8 million to 2022, a 1.7 million. What's?
Well, so, so that's where we, we saw some COVID dollars that were brought in. We also started the.
Didn't we spend all those COVID dollars?
We received the COVID dollars, but we spent them over a series of years. And so it depended on when they.
But the point is that we still have $8 million.
Well, that was, that was, once we get to the $8 million portion, then we started getting into the, the construction of the, of the withdrawal management.
But I thought those, those are subtracted from the 18 million.
So, yes, so from the 18, so we have, so when you take the, the, the construction, the, the amount that we had, that 18 million included the 8.8 million. And so when you take, subtract the, the numbers below there, that, that got us from 18 million to 2.2.
When you subtract what from the?
When you subtract the 9.815, the 5921, and the 8.8 million, when you subtract those three numbers.
Why would we subtract the 8.8 million?
Because that's, because those, they just, the 8.8 is not the same as the 8.8 from 2023. That's part of the construction, the construction portion of the facility.
So if we, if we, if we add the eight point, and let me call it 8.9, and the 9.8, and the 5.9. That's, that's, that's $24 million, but where's the $7.5 million that we got from the state? That's, that's, that's $24 million, but where's the $7.5 million that we got from the state?
For the 7.5 million, the 7.5 was for the resource.
Oh, that was resource, okay, that was resource recovery.
Five was the grant for detox.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we took, we took opioid money.
Opioid money, uh, we ended up taking some money from the General Reserve, uh, for that. We did have a $5 million grant that, that's part of, uh, part of that increase, uh, that's there. So.
All right.
So, yeah, so the remaining that we had at the end of 2024 is, is 2.2. But again, minus, minus 500,000 that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to, we can have some more information that come, come later, but going back to Commissioner Mojo's comments and Commissioner Bear's comments. And what I'm hearing on the street, too, is enough is enough. And, uh, at some point in time, somebody's got to say no to the people who are about to get kicked out of their homes, whether it's a farm home or whether it's a home in North Moorhead or a new one or whatever. I mean, 9.7, a, a four and a half million dollar increase at the county level in, in one year's time is really a lot of money. And we're not talking about the needs of the school districts. They're, they're having, they're actually having to go out for an operational levy, if I'm not mistaken, coming up, um, you know, because they're, they're already so far underwater. And then we haven't talked about, you know, the cities that we all live in, whether it's Moorhead or Barnesville or Holly or whatever. This 9.47 becomes something a lot more than that. And I just, I, I can't support this. And I, you know, I think, I think back to, um, going back in my ears on here. If, if we're starting to talk numbers like this, I think we're gonna start having to have wage freezes again, or, or position freezes again to, to help offset this. I don't, I don't know how else we can be doing this. I, I, I just don't, I. So I, you know, and I, and again, I say this every time, I, I won't support this on a preliminary levy because I have yet to see us ever change our preliminary levy once it's set. And I've talked about that in the past many times, that it just, once we get, okay, it's done. And I just, I, and again, I'm talking on behalf of, I think, a lot of people that I know that are struggling with, um, the level of prop tax increases. And a lot of it, I think Commissioner Mojo explained a lot of it, and where a lot of it's coming from is at the state level. But at some point in time, the proper entities have to be held accountable for what they do and they don't do. If, if we're putting mandates on our counties and on our cities or whatever, supply the funds. Or don't force it onto our regressive tax that we have here as our only source of revenue. That ends my spiel.
And Mr. Chair Commissioners, I wasn't suggesting that this 9.47 would, would be something that I would bring, uh, in two weeks. I, but I am looking for if there are different insights that you guys have. And I appreciate Commissioner Mojo's comments from the standpoint of, we do have uncertainties from the standpoint of our, of our COLAs. Uh, and, and also to include, just to remind the board that when we heard from Quinn, he also, uh, does not have anything for the big beautiful bill impacts, just because we don't know either way at this point what the impacts could be. And so, um, but, but from that, that point, I'm certainly open whether that's today, whether you're, you know, whether there's a, uh, if you'd like to have a work session to, to further vet, uh, some of these different things, uh, or, um, or to have a conversation today to, to, to get that, and I can come back at a next week, uh, with a, with a new number with Lori not here.
Commissioner Eberger.
Well, the big overview is, is been presented, but I'm, I'm gonna have to agree on some of the external agencies. And I'd ask, uh, the other commissioners to look at where your portfolio is, and if you don't see a return on investment in some of these things, if it's not something that's working, uh, speak up. You know, I, I, again, with the library, in a, in a year where they're moving offices and trying, trying to negotiate a, uh, a, a lease agreement with the city of Moorhead, it's, it's, it's tough to say we're not gonna look at the increase there, but it may be necessary in order to get this levy under control. I will be frank, and I think, uh, a number of the commissioners here would agree, $100,000 for the Fargem, Moorhead, West Fargo, EDC, uh, it's not reflective of the services we're getting, and there could be a strong need to look at that. The chamber is tied in with them for 85,000.
I think there's a, is there a typo in the packet?
So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mojo, if you look, that the, the requested amount for, for 2025 was 250,000, this board provided 185,000. Uh, and so, uh, the, the request for 2026 is 185,000.
No, I, the line above, my understanding is the chamber got 80, 85, and the EDC got 100.
Oh, yeah, that is backwards.
That is correct.
Okay.
You know, looking at this, particularly with the, with the, 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 uh, current and future needs we have in dealing with our legislative issues, I would like to see the EDC remain getting funded at the level we did last year, which should be 85,000, and.
I mean, the cha, the chamber.
Or the chamber, sorry. The EDC, I think, um, our return on investments there is not near what the payment we're making is reflected, and I think we should have a discussion. I think $100,000 is excessive.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. So I agree with, um, what Commissioner Eberger is talking about. You know, I struggle in regards to the Innovate 28 piece. And so I'm wondering if this board would have the appetite to look at pulling the Innovate 28 funding and then talking about specifically funding the EDC and the chamber as separate requests.
I would agree with that, it's a. I think there's a consensus on that.
I, Mr. Chair, I have a proposal on that, but I want to hear the rest of, I don't want to cut off Commissioner Eberger's time.
Well, again, when you look at what the chamber's done, I think continued funding of them at the level we have in past years is certainly warranted. In fact, I'd, I'd say after this last session, if we had the money, I'd like to see them fund at a higher level, the same with, uh, um, Downtown Moorhead, Inc. But I don't think we have the money to increase anybody's, uh, external, any external agency's, uh, funding. I would see, um, the EDC, we should pay them separately, and we should remain as members of that or, organization. Whether it be on the executive board or not, I'll leave that up to their governance committee, but I really don't see much more than $10,000 as, as something that, uh, we, we would meet our return on investment with. The, the other funding could be to, put towards bringing the levy down. There has been some talk about recognizing our rural cities and their EDAs with some funding, and I'm, I'm open to that, but again, we're having to cut, and it's hard to, to, as much as you'd like to be supportive, it's hard to, even if it's a level of 20,000, to say, we're gonna, we're gonna take on new, new expenses. But I'm open to hear what the rest of the, you know, the commission has to say on this.
Commissioner Mojo.
Go ahead.
You haven't gone yet. You haven't gone, you haven't gone yet.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Kravina.
Well, um, thank you. So just a couple of things, um, I'm definitely, um, open to, um, breaking down that with the EDC and, as we just talked about. I want to make sure it's understood that under CAP LP, their request, um, was for 56,788, and that was a 5%, and so we know their number. And then the other piece of that, I'm guessing that added to the 121 was, what was that number, Steve? Six, uh, or 64 grand?
64,834.
And that's their senior coordinator.
Right, and I guess, um, I need more detail on that. I don't know enough about it to know whether that's a.
Well, Mr., I might, that, so, um, you know, I, I certainly understand Commissioner Bear's, um, point, and I, I'm not, I just want to clarify if his point meant eliminating the senior ride piece and the senior coordination.
The ride piece.
The ride piece, because the question you have, um, you know, I, that's the position that Dale Rowley had in the community for a long, long time. That position does a enormous amount of work in connecting our seniors in our community with all of the Medicaid in, components and, uh, working diligently with our community centers in senior care. And in a year when there's so many unknowns in regards to Medicaid, it certainly seems like that would be a, an, a huge return on investment.
Right, and then the only other one that, um, just because I have, hear the conversations of a lot, I, I do have to say, um, I question the need to set aside, um, $250,000 for self-insurance planning on healthcare. We have a million in the bucket right now, is that correct?
1.2, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kravina.
Mr. Chair.
Hey, Commissioner Mojo.
I also, um, I did have that star just because I wasn't sure, you know, how far into this we're, we're wanting to continue to go. If there is a year where it's really challenging, this year might, might be one on that one, too.
Did you have something?
Yeah, the only other piece I might have is just a follow-up on the, the chamber Innovate 28, EDC discussion. Over the last three to four years, I've been really, really critical on, on making sure that Clay County funds are going to help spur growth and development on the Minnesota side of the river. Boy, uh, just speaking from the chamber, they just have done a phenomenal job in keeping us really up, up to speed on what they're, um, what they're seeing, what the issues are, how we can work together. I was on weekly calls with the chamber, you know, and the chamber's within my portfolio, so I can really speak to that. I, I agree, I, I've, I've sat through meetings, through presentations. I cannot find a tangible piece of work that we've benefited from with what the funds are for the EDC. My discussion point would be, um, pulling the Innovate 28 funding, funding the chamber to the tune of $100,000 for the '26 request with the $85,000 that would have been earmarked for, uh, EDC Innovate 28 pieces. I would, uh, reduce that to a nominal amount, I don't know if it's 10, I don't know if it's 15, I think we can talk about that. Because we've really heard from our small cities in our EDA roundtable about the work that they're doing, how they're partnering with Derek LaPointe, how they're partnering with the chamber, I would like to propose funding the small cities, EDAs. I believe we have four in Clay County, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Deworth, Glendon, Holly, Barnesville, to the tune of $5,000 apiece. And then I think there would be some savings realized with the additional, um, out of that 85, if we do 10,000 to the EDC, then that would be 75, and then there'd be $55,000 savings if we decide to put that towards lobbying, I don't know, but, um, certainly up to this board.
I would agree with that.
We have, um, the current 2026 budget has zero lobbying dollars in it?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I did put a, a new request of, for $25,000, and, uh, I would, I'd have to check with Lori to see if that's captured in the 146, 681.
The new, that was the new request line.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so, so on that new request, again, just to clarify, I think that, that, I know that the two items there are, are a, a social work position that Quinn presented that had the revenues to cover, and I also believe that it has a, uh, one of the other new requests is from IT Department for a cybersecurity event.
All right, so that, of that 185, uh, you know, suggestions been 100 to the chamber, 10 to the EDC, 22 are small EDAs, and potentially 25 then could go towards lobbyist issues that we have to fund somewhere.
And we're working, we can present that later, but we're working with a lobbying firm. I think we're in the process, we got, got those late last week, so we're in the process of getting that.
I mean, if those, if those numbers were what we were to finally determine, that's 155, so there'd be 30,000, um, savings over the, um, current budget proposal for that economic development line item.
One, one comment on the EDC, is 10,000 gonna get us anything? Is that even gonna get us a foot on, a seat at the table? I mean, if we're gonna take them down to that low, why give them any? Because I mean, if we, if we're not gonna have a seat at the table anymore at that rate, I would look at it and just cut them all the way out and save that money.
I think it's worth remaining in, and this is just a gut reaction to burning bridges. There may come a time, particularly with the growth patterns you see on both sides of the river, that we can find some mutual interest and some, uh, return on investment in the future. And I don't want to leave future commissioners who, who may have to make the decision in five or 10 years grappling with how to do it. If we keep a hand in there, if nothing else, we'll have the quarterly board meetings. I wish there were some things I could point out where we, uh, currently have a return, but I don't see it, and since Innovate 28 came out, the chamber has managed to not only remain a resource for this county, but increase their value. I have not seen anything in Innovate 28 that is applicable to anything we're doing over here. So I understand the frustration, but I, I would like us to at least pay for remaining in as, as an organization, or as part of the organization. Certainly, if, if, if the majority of the commission feels otherwise, you know, I'm not gonna get my feelings hurt, but I think it's worth sticking around.
I would support the 10 grand. I think we need to have our name on it.
Well, I, you know, I, and again, I'm, I'm gonna speak to economic development in general. I, I think it's, it's, um, it's a very important component of what we should be supporting. You know, I, I campaigned on economic development in all my years of being on here as to support ways to get additional businesses and, um, residents to our county. And, um, the, of course, the amount of tax funds that we can put towards that is minimal, but I, I think it, it's important for us to, whatever table is talking about it, that they get the perspective of county government, uh, in whatever they're doing. And I don't know that they're gonna give us a lot of weight if we're not as, at the table. You know, so, um, so from that standpoint, I, and keep in mind, uh, the, the better success we have in economic development is also a part of that, what we see every year in our, uh, being able to reduce our levy by that 1% or 1 and 1/2% for growth. So it still is a, it's an important component, uh, so. How you, how we determine how that goes is, is fine, but I, I, I do think that it's in our best interest to, um, certainly be supporting the entities who were working on our behalf to see growth in our communities.
Our quarterly meetings have really put a different light on it. There's stuff happening in Holly and Dilworth and, and Barnesville and Glendon, and, uh, they're, they're rolling along and they're making progress and they're growing, and they should feel support from the county.
All right, so we've, we've managed to maybe alter a resource here. We only got about four-point-four million to go.
I also wanted to say that I understand that the external agencies is minimal, but I think we need to control what we can control, and so, back to my comments earlier, holding a zero percent increase for, um, the ones here. My only question was, uh, the Valley Water Rescue, are we anticipating that that's just not coming yet?
Mister Chair, Commissioner Mojo, that comes out of the sheriff's budget, so I, I would, I can reach out to Gabe on that. You know, just kind of, you know, one of the things that we've talked about is, a, a letter did go out, uh, in June, uh, to, to each of these entities, look, asking them to look at their requests this year, knowing that it was gonna be a challenging year. You know, I, I think if you take a look at it and star the areas that either already are, didn't ask for the same amount, or are, or had a decrease, we really just have Barnesville Ambulance, Dancing Sky, and I think, I believe Dancing Sky is based on a, a, a formula, and so I don't believe that we have the opportunity to, to adjust that. Well, you do, uh, but, um, uh, but, and then Lake, uh, Lake Agassiz Regional Library, the, the CAP LP, rural, rural routes portion, uh, and then even rape and abuse was a, was a, was a decrease. And so there's really, um, from, from holding things flat to, to decreasing, a majority of our, of our external agencies did honor that request, so.
Just again, a point on the Lake Agassiz Regional Library. Being on the board, I'm aware of how tight things are. There are funds being cut for them that are passed through from the state, they're federal and state funding. I realize that there's, there's expenses this year that we didn't anticipate, and, uh, I would appreciate if, if their request were met, but I also understand there's, everybody may be in that boat, but having seen what's going on over there, I know the funding is necessary.
One, one comment on that. Correct me if I'm wrong, they, they're sitting on a two-million dollars reserves, correct?
They budget in the deficit every year, and this is something I, I, I have just been in amazement, but they make it work, but a large chunk of that, uh, will be encumbered, particularly with some of the expenses we've got. But yeah, they have, they have reserves, they haven't burned through those, but they also need to maintain them. So, you know, I'm open...
With this, with this tight budget cycle, this is, this would be the year to start using up some of those reserves.
One, one more.
Yes.
Sorry. Can, you know, I know we have a, a road turnback piece on highway, have, have we had discussions about potentially changing that?
Are you talking about that four-hundred thousand? Now, that four-hundred thousand that, once we, we paid off, we made our last payment, and then last year we took that four-hundred and we put it towards striping, I think that's what you're talking about, so...
Right, would there be...
And on, in his five-year plan, he has it put in for seal coding.
I know, but I'm just...
Yeah, no.
Yeah, so, so I think, uh, Mister Chair, Commissioner Mojo, yeah, there's the four-hundred-thousand-dollar turnback has been in the budget, I think, for, uh, two different, this will be the second year. Uh, I think that, uh, earlier this year, Justin came before the commission, and I believe that he's striping, he's, he got approved to stripe the entire county for under, just under a hundred-and-forty thousand. But as Commissioner Bear mentioned, uh, through highway tracking, it, it, uh, once he received, once he received approval last year to maintain that, he has had that part of his, as part of his five-year plan.
So he has a, um, part of his five-year plan. One of the things that he was gonna also be providing us, and I, I think we've got that coming up here pretty soon, was his new year, the updated five-year plan. And one of the things that may work to our benefit there, of course, is some of the projects and some of the bids that came in on the projects that were in the five-year plan, we saw a considerable decrease. So, and again, going to what Commissioner Mojo stated, this might be a year that, that we could say, okay, well, let's, let's pull that because, and, and it's, it shouldn't impact your five-year plan because you still have, you still have a lot of money that you anticipated needing for prior projects that you saved. So that, that might be another area that we can, and we're gonna be having a highway tracking here after this meeting today, so we can talk about that. But, but I do think that, I mean, right now, I think everything needs to be on the table, so.
Did, Commissioner Mojo, did you, was that...
And then my only question was, um, you know, soil and water has a two percent increase this year. I thought SWCD aid saw an increase with the legislature this year, does that...
They did not. They had a, they had a de, uh, decrease of, um, that number, I think, was right at thirty-six-thousand dollars.
Okay, their aid decreased.
Uh, their aid decreased. And then they, then, the other part they did, because they, of that happening, they had a position open, and they are not filling that position.
Okay, so the new request is with that adjustment?
Yes.
Okay, um, can I, I just want to ask one last question on the senior coordinator position, that's sixty-four thousand, how was that paid for before?
Uh, Mister Chair, that is actually, it's in Quinn's budget, uh, and so, um, it show, normal, in the past years, we didn't include both of the requests, this is the first year we included both of those requests.
So, Lakes and, Lakes and Prairies has a, they had a request of fifty-six thousand seven seventy-eight in twenty-twenty-five, and they won a hundred-and-twenty-one in twenty-twenty-six?
No, that's, that's not true. That's just because they are taking, they're just, so this board has a better understanding of the external ask. We funded that, um, senior coordinator piece for a long time through Quinn's budget. It's just on this spreadsheet, it's, it's not been realized in the prior...
Right, we're showing, we're showing, then, then, when you asked, when this board asked about what, what are we paying outside entities, we added, we added the senior, the senior NAPS position, um, that's sixty-four thousand eight thirty-four. No.
And I guess I, from comparative purposes, then, we should have included that in the twenty-twenty-five number, too. Because it makes it look like we're, they're seeing a huge increase when they're not.
Correct.
So to, in her note to us when she was here a couple weeks ago, that number that you see on twenty-twenty-five is the same, fifty-six thousand seven seventy-eight.
Yeah, for the ride share part of it. No, for, no, for the others.
For CAP LP, for their operating.
Yeah, right, yeah, that's more than ride share though, isn't it?
Yeah.
There, there's two, two, there's two letters that you have within your packet, there's the, there's the, it came in, her request came in two different letters, there's fifty-six thousand seven seventy-eight for the rural routes, uh, and then there's a, the sixty-four-thousand-eight-thirty-four.
My mistake then. What was the other number, sixty-four what?
Sixty-four eight thirty-four.
Okay, thank you.
And that's, yep, that's the NAPS.
And that we've, that we've, we've always paid that.
Yes, that's part of Quinn's.
And that, and that is something that, I agree with Commissioner Mojo, that that is extremely important to our seniors. That's a, that's a no-go for me in terms of, of touching that, that's, um, and again, that's another one of those components that helps them get down the right avenues that can keep them in their homes.
Yep.
Yeah, that's not a, that's a no-go if they're talking about cutting that, in, in my opinion.
I don't, I don't think, Mister Chair, anybody was talking about cutting that one.
Okay, okay.
Mine was the ride share component.
Okay, yeah, and that's, I, I guess, you know, what is, what's the usage been on that?
Two-hundred-and-seventy in the last year.
We hear, we hear time and time and time again that, um, transportation in our rural communities is a, is a major issue, and we can't ignore that, but, and again, I think going to your comments, if we had two-hundred-and-some people using it for sixty-some thousand dollars, is that the right way, uh, in the right use for those, for those funds? We have to have that conversation, it's, you know, so, but I mean, again, that's...
One, one other thing, Mister Chair, on this external agencies, the Barnesville Ambulance Service, I, I would like us to see us to wean ourselves off of that completely in the next three years, because I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's another county that actually subsidizes an ambulance service. I think it's put more on the cities and the townships, and with Barnesville Ambulance, they don't even receive any money from Wilken County itself, and they provide about a third to two-fifths in that area of their areas in Wilken County, and they do not receive any money from Wilken County. So I would like us, if it's a slow ten thousand a year for three years, and put it onto them to go to their townships and the city to cover that bill, so it's not a one big hit, but I would, I would like us to see us wean ourselves off of that external agency.
I might...
Yes, yes, Commissioner Mojo.
So, uh, we had a meeting with the City of Barnesville after the ambulance presentation. Uh, I think it's understood and appreciated that we went from thirty in twenty-four to thirty-five in twenty-five, because I think we had, it was even lower in twenty-two, twenty-three. I, so after that conversation, um, had done some research in regards to how do we help them, you know, what additional grants are, are out there. This is a big legislative issue that we've talked about. I, um, I don't know if there's the capacity to put that additional cost on that because they, to the townships, because they still are operating in a deficit. Now, I think we should also gently encourage them at our small cities meeting that a conversation with Wilken really does need to be happen, you know, it really does need to happen, and I think if there's not a shared partnership, that would really make any going forward with what we are fully, fully, um, providing challenging. Now, you know, I've said this before, um, it's interesting to me that Sanford provides such a phenomenal service to northern Clay County. There is a major desert in regards to ambulance service in southern Clay County. You know, and, and I just, you know, at what point are we willing to be okay with reduced service to those critical areas? So hopeful that, um, you know, if we can, can keep the thirty-five thousand dollars for twenty-five and for twenty-six, um, hopeful, hopeful that we can help with that, but that's a challenge, that's gonna be a challenge to cut that any further.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
This has been a major discussion point with public safety at AMC. This is not, uh, an isolated incident or situation, it is a, it is a statewide problem. There was a Band-Aid that passed, I think, the session before this one, uh, and it's really incumbent on the, the area. I don't know if they can come up with an agreement with Sanford, I don't know what the details are. I don't know what's been tried, but there's gonna have to be some other partners in there besides the city and, and the county to, uh, help keep this ambulance running, this service provided. And if, if a large portion of it is in Wilken County, Wilken needs to step up.
All right. If we're still doing this, Mister Chair, I got one other one here. The ID department, the cybersecurity event training for forty-five thousand dollars? No, I understand IT and cybersecurity are top of our thing to fund, but with that one being just a, that training, I, I don't quite understand what it's all for, and if, is it just a snapshot of how, how we're working on that, and then within two weeks, it's already gone and passed? I, maybe we should have Rory come back and explain that ask to us a little bit better? Because I know that was one of the very first budgets that we heard, so maybe invite him back to explain that and walk us through how that, how that ask would work next year.
I know, Steve, your calendar you had down in here that you were hoping to have that preliminary levies on the sixteenth? You got a ways to go before the sixteenth. You mentioned maybe about a work group session night. We've spent an, about an hour here talking, and I think maybe, maybe we should look at a work group session next week, because we gotta, we gotta get, we gotta figure some, some things out here. And, and I guess, uh, what I would suggest is, let's, let's try a, let's, are we all available next, next week for a work group session? All right, let's, let's maybe schedule a work, work group session for, uh, next, uh, one o'clock if we can. And in the meantime, Steve, hopefully, um, you can maybe...
Would it be possible at one-thirty?
Okay, sure, yeah.
Is that okay?
Yep.
I have a doctor's...
All right, all right, one-thirty. And let's plan that, and, um, any revisions that you can bring back at that time, too, will be helpful, but, yeah, this is gonna require a lot more conversation.
And I don't know Lori's schedule, but, um, but I will, hope, hopefully she's there, and I know that in the past, when you guys have made suggestions, she's able to have her laptop there and can give you real time, so I think that'll be helpful.
And that date will be the... Well, a week from today, the ninth.
Ninth, yeah, ninth.
Do we have a clear number from Dale? Is it, um, on probation? What number should we be using?
Well, so the, the number, the number that, that Lori had in there, I believe, was, was the number he provided. Uh, they've been work, they've been working closely together.
One forty-five something?
Uh, it was more than that, I think it was two fifty.
Two fifty?
But I, I can get clarification on that and, uh, from Lori and send that out to you. But I do know, based on what he presented today, uh, that is included, uh, included in that eight-point-four-seven.
Do you think in a week we'll have better guidance on the unions?
Uh, no, no, we won't. I mean, I'm not anticipating that we're gonna have anything settled. Uh, the second meetings have started, or will be starting, uh, as, as far as that have started, uh, but we won't, uh, we still haven't even had our first meeting with the attorney,
All right, let's, um...
Thank you.
Move on, yeah, thank you. All right, um, committee reports. Ezra, would you like to start this morning, please?
I had no committee reports that, from last week, Mister Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Everne.
Thank you. Uh, last week, I attended the work session with Clay County HRA, which was discussed today. Later that day, I had the Red River Regional Dispatch Center Board of Authority meeting. Basically, the, the, uh, I've got a lot of notes here, but none of them are, it's kinda getting into the weeds, but the facility update we had, uh, looks like we're still on, on path for a October-November opening. There's gonna be a transition between the current facility and the new one, and they'll be effectively doing it one console at a time. We will be having, hopefully, an open house at our next meeting. Was it, no, it was in December, uh, when the cutover is finalized. Uh, next meeting, October twenty-eighth, uh, we're gonna try and have it at the, a public safety opening at the new facility. Uh, that completes that report. On the... I'm sorry, my notes aren't making sense. Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, I attempted to attend the, virtually the Metro Flood Diversion Authority Finance Committee meeting, but the Fargo City Hall, uh, broadcast of it, they were having, having problems both on the telephone and the computer, so I didn't make that. But the following day, on the twenty-eighth, I attended the Diversion Board of Authority meeting. And really, it was just a general business, maybe Commissioner, Commissioner Campbell recalls more, but it looks like for the most part, we just did our usual business, finance reports, nothing of any real import. On Thursday, the twenty-eighth, attended a PIC meeting, uh, on the issues we covered today. Later that day, uh, oh, that was the same day I attended the Diversion Authority meeting, and then that night, I attended the Morehead Library fundraiser, and that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Krevanoff.
My part was just the work meeting we had with HRA last week.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I also attended the HRA meeting that was discussed prior in the meeting. I attended the Prairie Lakes meeting in Purim. We had manager reports. Steam sales are down a bit. Talked about the ash management status, the layout of that campus in Otter Tail County, and then grant statuses. Had a long discussion about unacceptable waste. I know that we talked about with that at SWAC on Thursday, but making sure that we inform the public to cover those trash receptacles as, as they can. Obviously, when things are wet, they don't burn more, as effectively as possible, efficien, efficiently as possible. So making sure that we're communicating to those haulers, problem haulers about that. But, you know, certainly, Clay County is really proud of the material that we send there, really proud of our ability to keep that as dry as possible. So, great job. The next day, or that day, rather, I attended the FM land mana, Diversion Land Management Committee meeting. We talked about those Horace properties, ones that met the reserves in the auction, did move those for a recommendation of approval to the greater board, and then the Horace site for the elevator, the bid came in well under what the, the minimum was, so we recommended denial of that bid, but also working forward with our property management firm to see how they market that property. And then on Thursday, I attended the Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting. We did have an update from Stan Tech's, Stan Tech on the PFAS test results. Also for the public, as we burn that material, we're able to eliminate more than 99% of those PFAS through that process, so we appreciate having that ability to reduce the amounts that we're seeing. There were some, I don't want to say well volatility, but there were some voli, some outliers in the numbers, but Stan Tech talked to us about how that, that sometimes is a margin of error within the lab itself. We had landfill updates from Corey, and then a Purim update from Commissioner Campbell. And then the board did ask to have some discussion on what the contract, status of the contract stalemate with Morehead is, and many of those members are quite concerned about that, what that, that contract piece would mean for their residents, and we're hopeful that we can reach an agreement. And I think that concludes my report.
Thank you. I also attended the HRA meeting, joint HRA meeting that you all talked about. On August 26th, we also had the Regional Dispatch Board meeting that Commissioner Ebbinghaus talked about. I would like to add that the furniture came in at 15% below their estimate, and currently, the project itself is 1.55 million dollars under budget, and it's, you know, it's getting to, close to being substantially complete. So they, they cautioned that it's not there yet, but certainly it seems to be in, in good order. I think they're looking at having the new consoles installed in September, this month. Mid-October, they're going to upgrade the old facility and the training, and do some training. And in November, they're going to be configuring the new 911 system. And as Commissioner Ebbinghaus said, we'll have our October 28th meeting at that site. And they are currently at 36 full-time, and they're authorized for 38. And they have eight shift supervisors, and they're authorized for nine, so they're getting close to fully staffed there as well. Land management, Commissioner Mojo reported on that. It was a lot to, mostly to do with excess lands, issues that she explained. Prairie Lakes meeting on the 27th, again, Commissioner Mojo talked about most of those issues. I really don't have anything to add. Financially, we're fairly comparable to where we were last year at this time. Thursday morning, the 28th, so the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and again, Commissioner Mojo explained that. I don't really have anything to add to that. We had, that same day, we also had a PIC meeting. Commissioner Ebbinghaus did discuss those issues. Where we did talk about the, moving the detox to its own, and then as a result of that, needing to adjust the PDQs for both the Public Health Director and the Detox Director. And we did talk about some other issues that are going to be coming a little bit later on in regards to what things may be, maybe should be involved with the Planning Department versus Public Health. So more to come on that. That afternoon, I also attended the Diversion Authority Board Authority meeting. And really, the only thing that was discussed, the big thing other than the usual items and updates that go on, were the land management recommendations and the one elevator issue that, in Horace, that Commissioner Mojo talked about. The board did decline that offer as proposed by the Land Management Committee, and they did authorize staff to enter into discussions with the Realtor to look at selling that. And that concludes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I participated in the HRA quarterly meeting. That's been well-covered. That afternoon, I also met with Darren and our labor attorney in regards to negotiations. On the 28th, participated in the SWAC meeting. That's been well-covered. After that meeting, I met, met with Kristin Christensen. She is new, Senator Klobuchar's new staff member, and we talked about the, what's important here at Clay County. She'll be located out of, she's from Fergus Falls, but will be located in the Morehead office when, when she's not traveling the, pretty much the northern half of the state. Participated in the PIC meeting. That's been well-covered. Also spoke with Dan Molly and a series of shared issues. The 29th, met with Derek LaPointe. We're going to be some, getting some additioner, additional information shortly on the meeting with, with Deed next Monday. And on the 29th, also met with Sheriff Empteen. Just would make a note in your consent agenda today, there was a second national opioid settlement that we discussed a couple of weeks ago, weeks ago with the secondary manufacturers. Again, working with, with Public Health to get information from that, not including the most two recent, two recent settlements that you've opted into. The county has a, has received 1.277766. And we utilized the first million for the detox, and so we do now have, have revenues that we're going to see. The other thing that I've shared with you in the past is that they've not provided any updates or information on what we may be getting in future settlements. They've now updated their national, national opioid settlement site, and while it's not a guaranteed, they now have a figure into the, up to upcoming years of what we'll be receiving from each of those. So when we get the presentation from Public Health, we'll be able to have that information. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Brian has left. Sarah, anything?
One, one, yes. I also attended the meeting for HRA.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I reported on it in some of my discussion, but I did attend the University of Minnesota Citizens Advisory Committee. That's in collaboration with the AMC Extension Committee on Wednesday.
Thank you. All right, we are adjourned.